Good evening. I'll call to order Wilsonville City Council meeting for November 16th, 2020 for work session at 5:47 PM. We had an executive session and all of our council is here. Council, any questions on agenda or anything that's on consent? Okay. Any council concerns? Other than the worst pandemic of the last 100 years, no real concerns?
Your Honor, I just have one question about one of the documents that, and I didn't want to bring it, best probably to bring it up in the, um, in the work session, and it was just a question about the proclamation. Is that something we would discuss now before you would read it and we would approve it in?
If you would like to.
Well, the concern, the only concern that I have is that, um, on the fourth whereas, it says that 97% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that small businesses, as if Small Business Saturday had already happened.
Well, it's an annual event, and this is a national organization that pushes this. Over the last year or two, our, our local chamber has declined to advance or support it, so the council has undertaken to do it ourselves, but those kinds of comments that you referenced is based on prior years of experience across the country.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing nothing otherwise for a concern, why don't we move into our work session items, starting with our Kitakata Sister City Advisory Board discussion? Ms. Monahan?
Good evening, Mayor Knapp and City Council. Thank you for having me this evening. I am here to walk you through the draft bylaws for the Kitakata Sister City Advisory Board. As you'll recall, this is something that was discussed with the council back in December of 2019, and it was moving forward, staff was going through the bylaws with you and then hope it happens. So we're trying to wrap this up, so this evening I'm here to briefly walk you through what we have before you on page 10 of your packet and answer any questions that you might have. The intent of the bylaws is to create a new city board, and this is to continue our relationship with Kitakata Japan that we've had for over 32 years, and then enhance that relationship moving forward. I would like to note that on page three of the staff report, it mentions a timeline, and it says that we will go out for an application deadline in January, and this was drafted in October, and then it was determined that we should open up the application process now, that that's consistent with our other boards and commissions that are currently being reviewed, their applications are being reviewed and accepted now. So the current application is available now, and it's open until November 30th or until filled, to allow for people to submit their application now. We provided information on the website identifying that this is being reviewed by the council, and hopefully on track to be approved and adopted by the end of this year. So with that, I will walk you through high level of what is in the bylaws this evening for your review, and then open it up for any questions. If you are comfortable with these, or if there are any minor modifications, we'll bring them back for your review and approval on December 7th, 2020. So on page 10 of your packet, or page one of the bylaws, it walks through that we are creating an advisory committee for our Sister City program with Kitakata Japan, that this board will serve in an advocacy role, supporting and also an ambassador to promote a positive image and good relationship for this program. The board will recommend policies to the council as well as activities. This is consistent with other boards and commissions that we have. This will be a standing committee, and it has five to nine commissioners, or excuse me, members of the board. The intent for that is to provide flexibility. On some of our boards, it can be challenging to keep them filled, so we want to ensure that this board can move forward. It also notes that the board will be made up of a variety of different individuals, including those that are either past participants as exchange students, they have hosted families in the past, are a member of the school district, or other members of the community or business people, so they do not have to be residents of the city. It also notes that they'll have staggering appointments, so once we go through the first establishment of the board, they'll be for three-year terms, and they will be appointed by the council after the mayor brings them forward, again, similar to your other boards and commissions. There is also an emeritus board member that we've included in this set of bylaws. That is because this program relies a lot on relationships. One of the things that they do work on is the exchange program with either kids coming from Japan or students in Wilsonville going to Kitakata, and we need to make sure that there are those strong relationships in the community to either assist with finding kids to go to Japan or to host them when they come and work on the programming with our staff liaison. So that is a little different than our other boards and commissions. Moving along, they will, as noted on page two, it outlines the duties. This is very consistent with other boards, having a strategic plan, proposing annual budget, which of course would be approved through our normal budget process, and working on recommending policies to the council, and then working on those other resources and promotional elements that are specific to this committee. Finally, on page three of the bylaws, it notes that there will be regular meetings. We've included that they meet quarterly to ensure that they are having a regular meeting to keep up their work throughout the year, and that they would be subject to regular public meeting notice, just like the rest of our boards, and as required under Oregon Public Meeting Law. And then I did mention previously the operating budget. This is something they would work with their staff liaison on, and then it would be brought forward during our normal budget process. This is similar to the tourism committee, so they come up with an idea of what they will need for the upcoming year, and then staff brings it through that process. Finally, there can be amendments to the bylaws. The committee can recommend them, although they do need to be ratified by the council. With that, that's just a high-level overview of the bylaws. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Oh, thank you. Counsel, any specific questions here? Counsel Lindell?
Um, I, I just wondered if, if there was a sense of what the $15,000 budget would be spent on? Is that kind of consistent with other boards and commissions? Or is this more or less than what is usually requested?
So that is thought to be something for travel, so there's not often travel, but it has been in the past that there has been a group that has gone over to Kitakata, and that does tend to add up, so that's why there's estimated budget there for travel as well as programming. So the programming with the students does require buses. Last time they came, I believe it was about $5,000 to $6,000, so there is a need for programming with that, so that's kind of where the number came up with. Erica Baylor had put this together last year, based on the programming efforts that were being done at the time, and the idea of future needs. So this would go through our next process. The $15,000 in our current budget was slated for travel to Japan, but didn't occur because of COVID.
So I wouldn't, I wouldn't compare this to other boards and commissions. It's, uh, it's way different in terms of its budget needs. It's going to fluctuate a little bit year to year, depending on if, you know, we're sending one or two elected officials over, what the expectations are on the receiving end. Sometimes we have to pay upfront costs on a contingent coming from Japan, and then we get reimbursed. So it's just kind of a best guess of what year one might look like, you know, looking back several years of what we've done in terms of expenditures for, you know, giving gifts and things like that, and hosting, you know, a Japanese contingent.
So the mayor looks like he stepped away, but I have just one more question, and that is, um, we have for a lot of our other boards and commissions, we have council liaisons. I don't know in bylaws for those other organizations whether that is included or not. Is that just a process that's done outside of council in terms of just appointment of member, uh, council members to serve as liaisons? So I just wondered when I looked at the board competition.
It's certainly something that you as a council could say, that you want to have a member of council serve as an ex officio member, just to kind of keep your finger on the pulse of what's going on, so that you can report back to the full council. That's not necessarily listed in there. You could also have a standing member of council, so we have some flexibility with the way the bylaws are written. I would say let's kind of put a placeholder on that for now, but I think we have flexibility to add a member of council if that's the desire down the road.
There might be some confusion by the public on this, and just to be clear, is it the city's intent to pay the travel costs of Wilsonville students going over there, or is that something which will, is not intended to be covered by public budget?
Yeah, that's a great question, and the answer to that is no, we're not intending to use public funds to send citizens over. If it's something that we would pay for travel, it would be in the official capacity of either the mayor, or council president, or a member of council. As you'll recall, the last major trip from Japan had quite the contingent, a lot of the local elected officials from our sister city, and the thought was we were going to send a pretty sizable contingent to kind of try and match their level of passion for the Olympics, but because of COVID, we never were able to do that. So we will, every year when we build a budget, we'll try to get an idea of what the expectations are, so that we can kind of keep pace with our, our Japanese counterparts to make sure that we're, you know, we have as much skin in the game as they do. But that would be subject to budget approval every year.
Right, okay. Counsel, any questions?
I just wondered, and perhaps you detailed this, and I apologize if that's the case already, but in the bylaws, when we're discussing the meetings of the board, the first kind of bullet, bullet A talks about regular meetings, it says at a designated time and at a location within Wilsonville. And I wondered if that definition also allows for the virtual meetings that we're all doing right now? I mean, here we all are mostly, probably, I think all of us right now are within Wilsonville, but the virtual thing is a different, it's a location sometimes isn't as, you know, specific for, for the meetings, right? Because you're meeting virtually, so I just wanted to check on that since it looks like our meetings will be virtual for some time.
Yeah, well, I mean, we didn't, I mean, these bylaws weren't written with COVID in mind, but all of our boards and commissions, we've adapted to COVID policies based on the governor's orders, so I would say that the language we have is fine and meets that requirement.
Yeah, the intent behind this was because there is no requirement that people be citizens or live or work within the city of Wilsonville, that it would still be required to meet within Wilsonville and likely be at the Parks Building or at City Hall, consistent with our other boards and commissions.
When we can all do that again?
Yes.
Actually, one other question too, though, you know, since I'm kind of familiar with the, with the programming that happens with the delegations and things like that, I appreciate that the bylaws set up, you know, the, the kind of official structure of how meetings would take place, and the functioning of the meetings, and that they would have some training as well on quorum and, and, you know, having that transparency and everything. It also occurs to me that, that how the programming has gone in the past when there's a delegation is there's usually welcome potluck, and then a, you know, some sort of a picnic or, you know, event, or goodbye dinner, or something like that. And of course, with the public meeting law, like those would need to be noticed, because the whole board would often be all at the same place at the same time, and, you know, talking together and interacting when there's a delegation. So I'm assuming that would all be fine as long as it's noticed. It's just that, you know, at the time of a delegation's visit, there will be many, many dates where the entire board would be together. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, there are exceptions to that general rule, so something like an annual event or a get-together might be excluded from that, but we've always just erred on the side of caution and just announced those as potential public meetings. Reality is, as long as you're not talking about city business, if it's just truly to host a, you know, a contingent from Japan, you know, we're not running afoul of any public meeting laws there, as long as you all don't start talking city business. But I would, I would defer to my colleague on the left here to give you final advice on that.
I guess I'm...
You don't, you, with the, with the social event, you don't necessarily have to, or you don't have to follow the public meeting laws because it's not a public meeting, but you do need to be careful that four council members, for example, don't get together and start talking about something that's coming up on the agenda.
And I think I was thinking less of council quorum and more of the board. This, um, because the Kitakata Committee Board would all be in attendance.
Yeah, I think the same rules would apply.
The topic of conversation could be the program, you know, so it would be more closely aligned to decisions that they would be making.
Agreed, and so some of that would just rely upon staff to train folks up on public meeting law, on emails, and everything else that we have to train all of our volunteers up on.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? The impetus for this, you know, as, as Ms. Monahan has outlined, is that we can maybe build a structure that we can do a little more robust job in our, our sister city relationship, and broaden out the contacts within our community, and, you know, have support from a larger number of people to sort of spread the work around, and also to maybe spread the enthusiasm around a little bit. My experience visiting over there in 20, what was it, 13 maybe, was, you know, really a remarkable experience, and the hospitality that we received and that the students receive every time they go is just really astounding. The wish to have exchange of ideas and understanding that would not normally occur is, is just really at the top of everything, and I would hope that this program can benefit over time from having a more formalized structure within the city that, that brings more opportunity for people to participate, and really on both sides, both to potentially visit there and to, to more robustly work with the, the groups that come to see us over here in, in ways that will be enlightening, I guess I would say. So I think that this is on the right track to do. Are there any concerns or questions, or do you think council is ready to ask staff to bring this back to us for a formal discussion next meeting? Counsel Lindell?
Well, I've been, um, I've been involved with a lot of foreign exchange programs in my college days, and I guess I, um, I just wonder about the value of not limiting this to a student exchange program. You know, there are a lot of other student exchange programs that occur that are not necessarily Sister City programs, and I'm just wondering if, um, if it, if the purpose is broad enough that it can encompass some business as well as cultural issues that are broader than what students might be able to represent in terms of the scope of, of and representation of our city. So that would be the only thing that I would really like to see for sure in the, in the program, and I understand that because it was previously a volunteer program with, with volunteer organizations, you go, you kind of go with what, what you can get help with. And so I would just encourage that we look at this as a, you know, a commerce and cultural issue that, that adults might adequately represent from our city.
And we can make sure that is delivered to the committee once they're seated.
And, and I guess part of what I hear being asked is whether the verbiage in the bylaws under the charter and purpose is sufficiently encompassing to enable that eventuality.
There is an interest from the, the city of Kitakata to expand the conversations with the city of Wilsonville, and they're, they haven't, they have expressed an interest in more of a commerce or sharing of ideas that is not related to the student exchange. And then in the duties of the board on page 11, it is pretty broad in saying assisting the development of the, the plan, recommending programs and policies. So it is, it is pretty broad, and I think that the committee can work within that to not only continue with the current practice of the exchange, but also building of more of an ideas or a relationship building with Kitakata. And, and then in the membership, it also identifies local businesses. So it, I feel like it's pretty broad, but we could expand on that if needed.
Well, there's quite a bit there. I'm looking at the first paragraph also, which is talking about a mission to encourage cross-cultural understanding and to promote educational and economic exchange. So I think that that's fairly open.
The language appears broad to me.
Yeah. All right. I mean, I think that it's good that we will have that in mind, and that as the board is formed, that we can have dialogue about that breadth of, of purpose, and, you know, I don't see a problem unless there's something on the staff side that you think is needing to be included. Does that work for you, Counsel Lindell?
Yeah, I, I think, for me, I think the language is broad enough. I think my concern was, are we still going to keep that same model where it just simply becomes student exchange? And, and so I was just encouraging that if the program is going to go to a formal city advisory board, that we expand that vision a little bit to include more of the cultural and business and maybe other concerns, so.
Yeah. All right, well, I think it's a good dialogue to have. Any other questions or, or concerns? Is council ready to, to ask staff to bring this back to us for a formal consideration next meeting? I'm seeing thumbs up on that topic. Okay, sounds good. Sounds good. Thank you very much, Ms. Monahan. Appreciate that. I have been joined by Mayor Alex Julie Fitzgerald in the background just to see how the meeting works from, from this standpoint here, so she's right here over my shoulder. But we shall continue. Next item up is solid waste collection rate report. Mr. Ottnad, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. City council members, Mark Ottnad here, along with Chris Bell, CPA, our rate review consultant. And tonight we have for you the topic of the 2020 solid waste review process, and we'll bring up the presentation here in just a moment.
All right.
Okay. As I noted, Chris Bell, CPA of Bell &amp; Associates, has a well-regarded solid waste review, who has done the Clackamas County review for quite a few years. Tonight's presentation will focus on the 2020 rate review process and the results, and the status of the 2020 new recycling services that city council authorized last year. I'll let Chris Bell now start off with the 2020 rate review process background.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I appreciate the time to, to sit down with you and present the findings of, of the rate review. And we kind of went through this last year. We had a lot of questions. This year, the present, or excuse me, the, the process was a lot smoother. We all had the expectations, and, and the hauler was, was fantastic this year in giving us the information that we requested. When we do the rate review, it's, it's review of the, the report that's submitted by, by Republic Services for the operations they, they completed in Wilsonville for the prior year. And when we look at that, that, that report, we take in consideration the operations, for example, the number of customers served, the, the number of businesses provided service, the amount of material and garbage that was collected. And we, as, we take that information and we compare it to the results that they reported. And along the way, if there's some questions or issues, we, we inquire on, on what was provided within that report, and we made some adjustments here and there, based on the information that we had. And then after the end of the review, we, we came to the determination that the overall composite returned a rate of 16.1% for 2019, which was a lot higher of, of, over the target, but this was anticipated from the input that we had last year on the rate review. Could you go to the next, please, next slide, Mark? So looking at for 2020, this year has been quite unique in addition to, to the COVID problem that we have. If you recall, there was a rate increase that, that went into effect on January 20, or January 1st, 2020, and that was reduction in the recycling surcharge. It was a cut in half for both residential and commercial businesses. And in addition to that, when we put together the, the projections, you know, we, we still aren't sure what the overall impact is going to be. Will from, from Republic Services took a snapshot of where they were, and they were estimating around 4% decrease in commercial revenue, and it may go a little bit lower, it may go a little bit higher, we're just not sure, because they're still, still kind of feeling the effects of it. However, you know, Republic did have some increase in operations, their driver wages increased, as well as some of the associated costs of the health insurance, but we estimated that that overall increase is going to be 2% for the union drivers and about 4.3% for the wages, excuse me, the, uh, uh, health insurance. And then Metro also increased their tipping fee by 90 cents on July 1st, and this was a function of, of a formula that happens. Next, please, Mark. Next slide, please, Mark. We also estimated that inflation was going to increase around 2.11%. Looking ahead for 2021, we kind of doubled that. Franchise fees also increased by 2 percentage points from 3% to 5%, and that compared to 2019 is also a substantial increase. And then the Oregon Corporate Activity Tax went into effect on January 1st, 2020, and the way the, the tax was implemented, there, it, it varies from, from company to company. However, what we did, and this is in conjunction with Clackamas County as well as other, other jurisdictions within Metro, we estimated that the overall rate impact, or excuse me, cost impact was going to be a half a percentage of revenue. And so the expected expense for Republic Services for this, for this year, for this calendar year is $35,700. So next slide, please. So taking all those costs and considerations, we're projecting that the overall rate of return for 2020 is going to be within the target. of return for 2020 is going to be within the target range, the 10, uh, the, the 8% to 12% target range at 11.3%. So since we're in, within that, that, that range, that allowable, uh, operational range, we are recommending that, um, you know, no change happen or no, no rate increase, no rate decrease, uh, in, for, for the upcoming year.
City council members, uh, Mayor, do you have any questions at this point?
Uh, I, I would like to ask, first of all, what is the impact of the reduction, apparent reduction of tonnage resulting from COVID changes, uh, either, or, either, or, or both, uh, commercial and residential, uh, on the, kind of the revenues and expenses and thus on the margin?
One of the things that we're noticing is that there is a significant increase in tonnage on the residential side, and it's anywhere from 12, excuse me, the 8% to 12% um, on the residents, you know, the, the garbage sat out weights a little higher. Um, we're seeing that. We're also seeing a decrease, uh, as you noticed, as you noted, in the commercial side. And my discussion with some of the haulers, it depends, it, it varies from city to city. Um, one of the haulers said that, that the large generators of waste, and he picked out a few, uh, there was a couple buffets that he was noticing that, that were shut down and they're not, they're not coming back just, uh, under the current circumstances. He said, you know, I've lost all my loss leaders, my heavy containers. I've retained some of the, some of the lighter ones, but overall, my, my, my overall decrease in revenue is, is, is noticed. They're hoping, and again, it's really dependent on the jurisdiction, that they kind of break even with the, or not break even, but, but the income is comparable to year to year. And so we're not hearing a, a large hollering out of, of the hauler saying, we're losing money on commercial. We're not hearing, we're making a lot of money. They're saying, let's take a wait, look and, uh, let's wait and see what happens. So there's, there's kind of a shift right now. There, there's a lot of unknowns. And so when we're looking at projecting for the upcoming year, um, Metro is assuming that their decrease is going to be about 9% overall tonnage, uh, and they're, they're, uh, setting the rate based on it. So, um, to kind of give you a, a long about answer, we're seeing an increase in residential, a decrease in commercial. To the overall impact, we're not going to really know until the year, until we have all the financials.
All right. I appreciate that. We'll have to work our way through. So council, questions?
Okay. If not, I'll, I can finish our presentation.
Yeah.
Which includes a review of the, um, first, I guess we had a couple of slides in here about some other fee increases that are proposed. So Chris, do you want to just cover this about, um, when the council considers this issue again next year, what are some of the potential new costs that are going to be potentially included?
Well, one of the, one of the, a- as I was alluding to earlier, you know, the tonnage, the, the tipping fee is very dependent on incoming tons because there's a substantial amount of, of costs that are fixed at the transfer stations, whether it's Metro or whether it's WRI. So any decrease in those tons increases the unit cost. And Metro typically will set a, a new tipping fee on July 1st. They failed to do that this year. Um, and, and, you know, unfortunately, uh, for the rest of us, we usually set the rates on July 1st based on that, that i- if there is a change in, in the tipping fee. Metro is proposing to adjust that fee on January 1st. And the overall impact is going to be about $2.65 per ton just on the regional system fee. And that, that's a fee that's assessed on every ton that is generated within the Portland metropolitan area. And then in addition to that, WRI is probably going to have some increase in fees just due to contracts or, uh, just generally, general rate inflation. And so the overall impact, uh, i- is not going to, i- it's going to be noticed, but it's not going to be significant, uh, in Wilsonville. However, there's another thing that Metro did, and they reduced the amount of tons that are coming into WRI. And so what Metro does is they allocate tons, they have a tonnage allocation, and they get 40% of the overall tons that are generated within the region to go, to flow to their transfer stations. And the rest of these, the, the, the nine other facilities are allocated tons. Well, of those nine, four of them had, uh, tonnages decreased. WRI was one of them. So we're not exactly sure what the overall impact is going to be on the tipping fee. We could, I, I'm anticipating it's going to increase. To what extent, we're not sure. But in addition to the January 1st increase that Metro is proposing, they're also looking at adjusting it again in, on July 1st and getting back to their July 1st, uh, schedule. So it's possible that we could see two increases from, from, um, Metro within the course of six months. And that will, and the, the second one is, uh, that they're anticipating in July, uh, is significant. They're expecting around $10 increase. So that could have an overall impact just on the rate pair of, of approximately 70 cents per, uh, the typical rate pair has a 35 gallon cart. That's 70 cents increase per month at a $10 increase.
We also want to update you on the status of the 2020 new residential, or excuse me, new recycling services that the council authorized, including residential food waste collection, bulky waste pickup for ADA and senior citizens, residential and commercial polystyrene or styrofoam collection station, commercial fluorescent tube battery recycling, and the commercial food waste program mandated by Metro. Regarding our local residential food waste collection program that allows food scraps to be collected with yard debris containers, that program commenced in February, uh, and it has done very well so far. The city has received positive, uh, feedback from residents. The city council, you may recall, you approved a community enhancement program grant for the distribution of 500 compost bales during 2021 to further encourage, uh, residential participation. Regarding the bulky waste pickup for ADA and senior citizens, it's a limited duration program, um, that was authorized by council. It started in February, but was suspended shortly thereafter in March due to the pandemic and resumed again in July. Uh, to date, 46 pickups of an estimated 100 have been completed. In terms of the residential commercial polystyrene collection station, uh, this allows the free drop off of bagged, uh, polystyrene, block foam, but not peanuts. Uh, this opened in February. We have had good utilization by residents and businesses. However, initially contamination rate was a bit high, and so the city will be working with Republic Services to better educate our public, uh, on recycling, including we'll be doing a recycling, uh, poster in the January issue of the Boonstary Messenger. Regarding the commercial fluorescent tube and battery recycling program, again, this was a limited duration program. Uh, approximately 100, uh, boxes, if you will, were anticipated to be distributed. Uh, city economic development and county sustainability staff were to market the program. Uh, however, the program was suspended in March due to COVID. Uh, the city and the county are now regrouping on new outreach protocols, uh, to how to reach businesses in the best way and then get them the boxes that they need. Uh, I will, we will note that Republic Services has actually acquired the boxes on site and has them now ready to go. Finally, regarding the commercial food waste program mandated by Metro, it's a three-year phased-in program. If you recall, uh, implementation of phase one with the largest food waste generators was delayed, uh, by Metro for a year, uh, in March due to the COVID pandemic. And again, that is scheduled at this point to resume in March of 2021. Uh, however, we'll see how that actually proceeds. At this point, we're happy to answer any additional questions that you may have. Uh, thank you, Mayor and City Council members.
Uh, thank you both. Uh, council, questions, clarifications? There we go. Council President Akrevol.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Um, I, I did have one question about the new, um, recycling programs that we started last year at the review time. And, um, I know that both, you know, in our last council meeting, we got a report from Republic Services that touched on the, um, styrofoam recycling program, and you did again as well tonight in mentioning the contamination rate that has been found with that program initially. Um, and I think, you know, so I, I've been thinking the, this last week on ideas on, you know, how can we try to curb that? And, um, I think that the Boonstary Messenger, we know that has good coverage and attention for our residents, and, um, hopefully that will help get the word out. I would expect that they probably also have some very obvious signage at the drop off that may help clarify that things need to be bagged and what's appropriate, not appropriate to be left. But, um, the Boonstary Messenger, I wondered, since this program is available for both commercial and residential, I don't know if the commercial, um, and the business partners that are within our city, if they are not residents themselves, if they have as much focus and attention to the Boonstary Messenger? I don't know. It might, it might be the case, but I don't know if that is. Um, and I wondered if further outreach could also happen perhaps through, um, you know, Jordan Vance has the email that he sends out to a number of businesses about economic development opportunities, and if it would be appropriate to, um, have a mention in that newsletter, that electronic newsletter, both as, hey, this is a service that's available within the city and please, you know, dispose of the styrofoam properly in this manner or something like that. I was just kind of brainstorming and wanted to float some of those ideas, um, because certainly we want to see it be successful.
Yes, uh, Mayor, Council Akrevol, that's absolutely correct. Uh, Jordan, I believe, has actually done that, um, already.
Oh, good.
Alert businesses, uh, to that. In fact, what we suspect is it's really, um, the commercial businesses aren't really the issue with the contamination, it's more our residents. And so as you're getting that, uh, public education in advance before dropping off the material, because by the time you get there with the material, you just want to get it out of the car, it's almost too late. So by educating people in advance, and so as, uh, Bill Evans plans to, is working with Clackamas County Sustainability to do the annual Wilsonville Recycles poster that's inserted into the BFM, uh, for the January issue, we're working with Republic Services now on several, uh, issues to improve, uh, collection and servicing, including, uh, the style polystyrene, uh, issue, as well as even things like, um, not blocking the alleys in Beauvoir on Thursday. So there's a whole set of issues we have collected that we will seek to educate the public on, uh, so thank you very much.
Oh, that's good. That's great news. Good.
Uh, Mr. Ottenad, are all of those programs that described as, uh, limited programs, I think that we kicked off in 2020, set to continue in 2021?
Um, yes, um, they are, as you note, the limited duration. Um, so Republic Services already acquired, for example, the boxes on the business, uh, tube and battery recycling. So that program is just ready just to be implemented and rolled. Uh, the costs are already, uh, known. Uh, the solid waste pickup is a matter of demand, and what we did last year, we, we just did an estimated number for purposes of budgeting. Uh, at some point, we will have to call it. Um, and as you indicate, as you heard, there's, uh, going to be cost pressures in 2021 that are likely going to re- lead to a potential rate increase. Um, so, um, we'll just be cognizant of that. But we did have a limit at 100, was arbitrarily chosen. So if we get to that limit otherwise, um, presumably the program would end, I presume, by the end of the fiscal year of, uh, June 30th, something like that, because your next rate review, uh, process would normally take effect, um, on that July 1 date.
Yeah. Well, unless we've all become so accustomed to those services and, and we think people want to pay for it, I don't.
That is an option for council to consider.
Get to the next review. Uh, okay. Any other questions? No questions? Not seeing any.
Well, thank you. We'll, we will be back.
Mr. Bell, thank you very much for your work.
We will be back at your next council meeting with a resolution of adoption of the solid waste report that allows you to not increase Wilsonville residents' rates at this time.
All right. Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our third work session item is, uh, employment readiness site report on Coffee Creek. Uh, Councilor Lindell?
Um, Your Honor, I, um, I had another item that I wanted to discuss, and I, and I probably should have done it under counselor concerns, but I'm wondering if we have enough time, and it has to do with the, um, business, the restaurant relief, or the restaurant, uh, grant program. So I don't know where you want that.
You made me aware of that, and, uh, I maybe should have, uh, come back to you and, and double check when we started, but let's continue with, uh, this topic. We'll try to, uh, enough time at the, at the, uh, end of this particular topic that we can, if we could move expeditiously through this one, please.
All right. Good evening, council. My name is Jordan Vance, Economic Development Manager. Um, I'm joined tonight by Alex Joyce from Cascadia Partners. This is a continuation of a topic from two weeks ago, um, on site readiness and development report for Coffee Creek. Um, we can give a very quick refresh on the study's findings and save most of the time saved for discussion. And just a heads up, Project Consultant will not be joining the resolution later this evening, so now is the best time for questions. Alex, can you pop open the presentation?
Sure thing. Um, I'll just start kind of midstream here, since we talked about all of this and go very quickly, and we can rewind if there's questions, but the project began with an assessment of tools from around the country. We also evaluated new tools for unlocking employment land ready, uh, sites and, and making them, um, development ready. And then we evaluated our own tool belt to suggest changes. Um, the work culminated in an evaluation of three sites in the region. One of them was in Coffee Creek. This is the site here. Uh, and just to note that the site development plan here, that's shown here, was, um, developed a number of years ago, uh, by McKinsey, and we were evaluating a previously developed site plan, so this is not meant to be necessarily reflective of the newly adopted in 2018 Form Based Standards. Um, but it is consistent in many ways with the type of, and the format of employment lands in our region. So large buildings, um, significant areas for truck circulation, loading and unloading, and employee parking. Uh, this was a mixture of general manufacturing and flex and some supportive office. It was on a 76 acre site, uh, and had, um, we evaluated all of the pre-development costs associated with the project, so it's, it's raw land cost and all of the site readiness costs, so the on and off-site infrastructure costs, which numbered in the millions of dollars of, uh, costs just associated with readying the site with sufficient infrastructure and, and most cases to be developable before the development even occurred. And then we estimated the vertical construction cost, the building construction costs to assess, um, and to conclude that the, the site has, um, significant upfront costs and development challenges that render this kind of employment use, um, challenging from a financial perspective. But we didn't stop there. We took it further and we evaluated a number of different tool options, uh, one by one, and then we layered several together to understand, um, what the impact of them individually is and also in concert with one another. And, uh, like most things in life, uh, it requires a number of solutions to be layered together rather than any single silver bullet. So that, I mean, that's the heart of the development, uh, roadmap. We also, using some, um, Metro data, evaluated the, the site area and the city and the region to give a comparative assessment of different demographic and, uh, transportation indicators so you can understand how it fares compared to those three, two other geographies. Um, and made note of how the, some of the key findings and how those could, um, uh, lay the groundwork for future city work to try to. for future city work to try to better position some of these sites. So I won't spend a lot of time going through that detail, but hopefully folks have had the chance to review this information. And since we were short on time last time, most of tonight is intended for questions. Are there any questions or other parts of this work that you'd like me to circle back to?
Yeah, Council, any, any questions? Lots of data included that, that kind of outlines the basis for the assumptions and I trust that all that work is, is appropriate, though Council Akval could probably double-check you on it, so. She's our data, she's a data lady.
Great.
The overall question I think that might be most eligible for discussion is, okay, so what now? Or, or what next? Or how do we utilize this in an effective way? Councilor Linville?
Well, I think your question is excellent and I'm waiting to hear the answer to that. But I, I wanted to just kind of, I spent some time talking with Jordan about the, the development of the tool and the toolkit and, and the model that was presented and all of the, and all of the data that, that was included, which, I mean, I think it was an incredibly comprehensive analysis and, you know, cost analysis as well as, as potential. And I think it's a, I want to hear what the future kind of next step is. But for me, that one of the good takeaways from that discussion was that this is a resource for us. This isn't necessarily a project. This is not something that we are being asked as a city to implement as a, for that piece of property. This was being taken as an example to look at how could we use multiple tools to come up with a best-case scenario in terms of how we would get the best return or what might be the best incentive for building. And if I, correct me if I'm wrong. So, so we are, and because this was a larger project and we happened to be included because through the, some generous funds that were provided to us, we are going to benefit from this because we now have kind of the toolkit and we have the different models analyzed and can pick and choose what might be the best utilization for us. So I, it was helpful to me to really understand that we are not, we are not being asked to vote on or, or approve a particular project on Coffee Creek, in any of the property in Coffee Creek. What we are being asked to do is to accept this report and think about what, what might be the next step so that it isn't something that's just put on the shelf and tucked away and say, thank you very much, and we never see it or use it again. So that was helpful to me to know that that's, that's really what we're being asked to do and that this was just an example of how some of those tools could be used.
That's right. And maybe if I could follow up and try and answer the original question that was asked, would that be helpful?
Yes.
Great. So I know that the city has taken proactive steps to begin, you know, to implement tools that can help with site readiness, like the WIN program and the like. And I think those are, those are, those are great steps and very much in line with the recommendations of the study. Oregon is, because of its limited ways to raise revenue and property tax and the lack of sales tax, et cetera, we have, we have fewer tools at our disposal than others, some other states. And so there's a couple of key things about these sites that stand out to me and, and specific to Oregon. Property tax abatements are one of the big tools we have, tax abatements in general, but property tax abatements are specifically, are important on these kinds of sites where you're really trying to attract development dollars. And those can be implemented in a number of ways. Also, larger tools that can address these regional, oftentimes transportation improvements that need to occur to make these sites developable. You know, in, in many ways, they sit there idle because the, the costs are significant on the front end, but also people are afraid to make the first investment because they usually get dinged with the highest bill. It's sort of a perverse system in that way in that the people who wait till the end can sort of benefit from everyone's initial investment. But what would be more beneficial is if there were the public funds that could handle these larger capital costs, particularly transportation, road costs. Those number in the millions and millions of dollars for sites like this and that's money you got to spend very early in the project when it is the most risky and you're not even really sure that you'd have a tenant or that the project will ultimately get built. So collective action, city action, county action, that can be focused on addressing some of those large off-site infrastructure costs make a huge improvement.
So maybe to hold on, Councilor Linville's comments about how we're not being asked to do this, I take there's also a cautionary piece that says, there are a set of specific recommendations and a set of general recommendations. And the conclusion, as I interpreted it, is that it likely will take multiple different steps combined to get the raw property to where it's attractive enough to, to attract, you know, significant private sector investment, you know, in some ways. And so the question is how, in, in how committed a way or how urgent a way do we think we want to move toward trying to get into that delta where, where it starts to look more interesting to some of the outside investment? Tell me if I'm not understanding it correctly.
No, I think that's exactly right. And there's, you know, there are certain moves that would be complicated and time-consuming but could have outside influence, outsized influence on the outcomes. But there's a couple of low-hanging fruit items that might, you might want to consider and that would be Business Oregon has offered, volunteered to reprogram some funds to pilot a project where cities can finance system development charges but get the money, right? And so Business Oregon would act almost as the lender in that situation so you're, you're not having to forego revenue and collect it over time as the city. You get your money, but the developer, the builder gets to pay those SDCs out over time, which makes a big difference for them. And it doesn't leave you with, you know, deferred revenue from an SDC perspective. So I would encourage you to take them up on their offer and be the pilot. That hopefully helps to scale up a program because it has real meaningful impact. The SDCs are, on a project of this scale, would be millions of dollars.
Well, that's very interesting. How will we be sure to follow up on that, Jordan, when you are not our lead guy anymore here next week or whenever?
I'm happy to help facilitate a introduction with, with Business Oregon if that is something of interest to the Council to, to pursue that further.
I would also, just, just a couple of other quick thoughts if that's okay. I think the local improvement districts are a tool that are used on occasion in Oregon and are legal. They are generally thought of as sort of a, a tool that property owners kind of self-organize around. The reality of multiple property owners is that they rarely self-organize, right? I mean, that is, that is, can be an unreasonable expectation of property owners. And so having a little bit of staff time to assist property owners and seeing the virtue of joining forces to be able to finance and take advantage of local improvement districts to finance. These tend to be small, not, not the major transportation costs, but smaller fine-grained projects that serve the interests of this collection of property owners, right? So you're not solving some regional transportation issue, but you're connecting a sewer over, you know, several thousand feet or whatever. Those can be effective, but they get rarely used because it requires a lot of effort, usually on the part of one landowner. And that's a lot of money that, and expertise frankly, that, you know, landowners may or may not. So some staff time and assistance there can be useful in this, in this specific instance.
That's, that's very good advice. Appreciate that. What other questions? Councilor Akval?
Thank you. And I agree, there's a lot in this, this report and the attachments as well. I, um, but sometimes since our last meeting too, and I kind of was looking in to which attachment is it? The attachment E, I believe it is. And there was a table on that attachment where it talks about different tools. Let's see, on, if you go to, it's like page four of the attachment E, but it lists out the tools and then the effort and then a column for effort, a column for impact, and then change needed, right? So I, you know, spent a little time with the table, look for the low effort and the high impact, right? And I noticed the proactive wetland maintenance education jumped out as an area that had low effort, impact was medium, but change needed was none. So I was curious, what does that involve? Is, what does that look like? Who, who would play a role in that? And just some more information. Because wetland, I mean, that, that would be specific and relevant to this site area as well, correct?
Yeah, so it's just, there's an educational component for landowners. Most landowners are not wetland experts. Some of them become wetland experts through the course of development processes, whether they want to or not, but, and so land management and, and sort of managing the, you know, ecosystem that's on the property and some education and some resources around how to do that and what are the best strategies for making it healthy, but also, you know, managing it in its place can be useful in the sense that there, it's not the city doing the management, right? It's just cities playing a resource and educational role. It's almost like an extension office or extension kind of program where you're educating a private entity to better manage, you know, the resources they have. And so that's, that's, that's how that model would play out.
And nested under that is that, there was also, you know, further in the documents, a section, expand statewide wetlands inventory tool. And it talked about how this service is available, but there's a long kind of backlog or it takes some, you know, longer period of time that's maybe not as helpful. Is that kind of nested, nested in that effort then as far as education? Having this tool available, having resources or, you know, a, a variety of information available for the landowners?
Yeah, in that sense it is. Empowering landowners to be able to navigate their way through and understand what issues they may or may not have once they decide to either sell or to develop their property. There's oftentimes a huge amount of uncertainty if you have a farmer or someone who uses their land agriculturally and, you know, a newly adopted plan calls for something different and they want to get out of their business and they are trying to assess what the value of their property is and how to, how to sell it. Unless there are more resources available to those property owners, it's like having a giant question mark on your property because you really don't know what portion of your land is developable or not. And, and the process means that you have to go through years and years of investigation and coordination.
Mm-hmm.
And frankly, almost have to have the development program ironed out already before you determine what's development and what isn't. And that is, that leaves a lot of landowners who, you know, may or may not have this kind of expertise in the dark and puts them at a disadvantage. And so there's a variety of recommendations around this issue of wetlands and wetland management and trying to capitalize on economies of scale and doing wetland assessment and plans and land banking, et cetera, on larger geographies, which multiple landowners could benefit from. There's a whole bunch of different recommendations in the, in the task one, or is it, I guess it's task three, I forget now, it's been so long, but task, task three items to make that the whole process much more efficient.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. I was just kind of interested in learning more and seeing what that could potentially look like or involve. Thank you.
So this is in front of us tonight to accept the report, as has been noted. And if Council is, is in tune with it enough to accept the report, that's the first step. And then we will subsequently, at some point, have to have discussion about next steps and, and what urgency or what priority we wish to place on certain of the proposed recommendations and how to go about that. So we'll have to look to staff to, to sort of bring that back to us on that format that's beyond tonight's scope kind of. And we, we can look forward to some more discussion then. So thank you very much for that. I do want to take a couple of minutes with Councilor Linville's questions that are pertaining to work that, that Mr. Vance does also. Mr. Joyce, appreciate your work on this one. Is there going to depart topic a little bit? Can you sort of give us a, a basic outline of what your, your topics are, Counselor?
Um, yeah, I think there's really three issues that I think we need to discuss. One is, at our last meeting, I believe it was our last meeting, we, I think I brought up the concern about the possibility of setting up, with winter coming and setting up the tents and heaters and some kind of a grant program for us to begin to work on. And I think that Jordan has done some work with the Chamber and I've had a, a brief conversation with the Chamber Executive Director about this. And I think the question really is at this point, do, does the Council want to pursue this, looking at a model, utilizing maybe the same kind of format we did for the small business relief grants and work with the Chamber to come back to the Council with a recommendation for a program to be funded. And I know that initially it was, we didn't have the governor's restriction of closing all the restaurants, which will occur in two days. But I think that my recommendation is that we move forward with it in some way or another so, because it's going to take several weeks for the work to be done and develop a model that will be able to come back and be approved by the Council and then there's applications and, and that whole process. So I, I don't see that it's helpful at all for us to delay that. Secondly, I think there, I also had concerns about, do we, given that the restaurants are going to close on Wednesday, do we want to do a program similar to what was done previously in the gift card program or something that is similar, some kind of a similar model that will assist, provide direct assistance to those restaurants? And then the third thing, I had some conversation with Mr. Ottnett about the possibility of doing some kind of a marketing campaign that would encourage our community members to eat takeout at least once a week so that it, it becomes kind of a promotion, that it would be done through Boons Ferry Messenger maybe. And I think Mark has some great ideas. But I, I think that it would be good for the Council to provide some direction on, on where we want to go, particularly with the, with the grant program.
So there's a couple of different suggestions that we have. And it's a question probably of, again, how much support and how much urgency to these given the changing dynamic. and how much urgency to these, given the changing dynamic that we're in at this point in time. Uh, I would like to ask Mr., uh, Cosgrove, first of all, to tell us if there's any, uh, existing structure, especially in light of Mr. Vance's, uh, pending move. How would we vet this series of ideas, uh, in order to arrive at, at some choices and some decisions?
So we have a, we have a working model, uh, where a council appointed, um, Counselor Linville to work with Mr. Vance and, uh, Mr. O'Malley, who just sent me a text message saying that he would love to join the conversation. I'm recommending that he pipe in during public comment, uh, to see if he has any thoughts on this. But, um, we certainly have some programs. I've sent some ideas to, to Jordan and he has some other ideas that he's, uh, shared with me that I think are all worth considering. I think the biggest thing is, is I'm out and about in the community. The one thing that, and this was pre-the governor's order, the one thing I've heard from restaurants that would make a difference is some, you know, tent awnings and space heaters. But given the, um, uh, the prohibition on, you know, in, in-person dining, we may have to flip that on its head. Um, Jordan has some ideas. There's a, there was a successful campaign in Europe that was called, I think, Dine Out Help Out, where people could go and, um, there were some restrictions on it. Couldn't include alcohol and things like that. But the, a, a family of four could spend up to like a hundred dollars and then the cities or the municipalities in those regions would reimburse 50% of that. So there are some ideas out there that I think would help during this very difficult time for our restaurants and dining establishments. I don't have all the answers right now, but I think certainly we could send it through the same kind of process. In the meantime, I could work with the finance director to figure out what resources we have. So we don't have to, um, slow down the process of, of generating ideas to bring back to council. But then I could ground truth what resources we'd have available and marry that up with the work that, uh, the three, um, come up with. If you're comfortable with that, we could get going on that sooner rather than later.
Well, Counselor Linville has, uh, urged us appropriately, I think, to look at alternatives. And it might well be that, given her past work with, uh, Mr. O'Malley and with, uh, staff, that she might be, uh, well-positioned to, to, uh, work with staff again and come back to, uh, council meeting with, uh, some more specific, uh, paths forward or choices to make amongst different paths with that. Seem like it makes sense?
Uh, yeah, from, from a staff side it does. If, if Counselor Linville's willing to do that again, I can't speak for her. The other thing I want to say is that we are trying to figure out a creative way to keep Mr. Vance on in a limited capacity. I note that the exchange rate in Australia is one, one dollar and 37 cents. So there's some incentive for, for him to stick around a little bit. If we could get him to, to stick around for 10 to 15 hours a week, there's some legal issues and HR issues we have to iron out. But I am encouraged that, uh, as of today, it sounded like things are moving in the right direction. So we might be able to keep Jordan around and, and focus on some of these crucial issues. I think it would be, uh, it would be something that would benefit both sides because right now with some of the funding challenges in CD, this might be a good opportunity to kind of put a pause on that position. And if Jordan's willing to continue on, we'll certainly keep him plugged in.
Okay, uh, counsel, what do you think? Counselor West?
Um, I think this is a very prudent idea. I, uh, I think that it's unfortunate that we don't, we have to shut down these businesses with the legislature who isn't able to act yet to make sure that we have some type of supports available to our small businesses, um, to try to help them out. But we don't have any of that coming, um, from the statewide level. I, one idea, I don't, Brian kind of mentioned it already, but one idea that I had was just loosely, because our gift card program was so successful, spend 20, back in a gift card. So if you do takeout at a local restaurant, whoever would qualify for that, um, then you get $10 back or something along the lines of similar to what Brian just mentioned. I think it'd be kind of a smart way to drive revenue now to these businesses while also maybe down the road, bringing some, uh, repeat customers to come back with the gift cards. Um, I think that's, even they might, they might get, um, you know, more than one order out of that to really help support their cash flow and their needs. I, uh, I, I think that Counselor Linville, if she wants to do this, it'd be a fantastic initiative. She did such a great job last time working with, uh, Chamber, um, on hashing out these issues. And I'm just really proud that as a city, we're looking at ways to be very proactive as quick as possible to find, um, supports for our small businesses. So I support it and that is my gift card idea for the day, um, moving forward. So that's where I stand.
All right. Uh, rest of the council, are, are we good with, uh, asking, uh, Counselor Linville to, to, uh, move forward and, uh, work out some details to bring back to us? I'm seeing thumbs up. I think that, that staff is, uh, good with that too. Uh, Mr. Cosgrove, why don't you proceed on that basis?
Will do. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Well, we've run a little bit long on time. So, uh, hopefully we've kind of covered the work session items that we need to. Uh, you need, uh, what, about seven minutes break?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'll ask council to come back at, uh, about 7:10 then, and we'll jump into our regular meeting. Thank you very much.